Being 6:30 on Tuesday, March 10, 2020, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for one nation, under God, visible, liberty, justice.
First item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve our February 25, 2020 minutes.
So moved. Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone tonight?
We're good.
I heard it was a nice day outside. Is that true?
The rumor is true.
Okay.
It was about 20 degrees and snowy.
My kind of day. I'm going to start my report with a personnel update. I'd like to let you know that we received resignation from Victoria Mankowska. She was an ABA over at Park Ave Elementary School. I'd like to also let you know that we have moved Ms. Deborah Zablocki from interim dean to official dean at the Park Ave Elementary School. We're excited about that. And I'd like to give you an update on the Webster Middle School principal search. We have an interview committee that met with several candidates last week. I want to thank, publicly thank, our interview committee, Julie O'Connor, Amanda Young couldn't make it, and Stacy Tucker couldn't make it, Meg Laz, Sherry O'Hare, Kathy Barris, and Jill Chapdeline. We interviewed several candidates and pushed forward Heidi Peterson, who is currently our Assistant Principal at Webster Middle School as a finalist. There were not two finalists. The interview committee felt very strongly about Heidi. She has joined us back in December, and today we held a voluntary staff interview for the Webster Middle School staff, and we collected our feedback from staff that attended, and we will proceed from there. So stay tuned. There's a brief enrollment update in your packet. Just want to point out that this is this year's rolling numbers. As you can see, our October 1 numbers across the district were 1,850 students. As of March 1, we have 820 students. There's a bounce in and out at different schools. So that's just to give you an update. The hot topic on everybody's mind, which is keeping us hopping, is how we are dealing with the coronavirus in our schools. Very serious matter, and I will say, as an educator of well over 20 years, I've never experienced something like this. And I think many educators are stating that. I just recently got off the phone with the Department of Education, and they're even saying that. So I'm sure you recently heard that the governor just declared the state of Massachusetts an emergency. I think there are 91 suspected cases in Massachusetts, one confirmed. We've done a number of different things to be proactive. We invited the Board of Health here with our district leadership, a district leadership team at our district safety meeting, which we generally have monthly. We met with them on March 5. We had the EMS, police, fire representatives from the Board of Health. Our school physician was on the conference call, and all of our principals, all of our school nurses, and we started to discuss planning and what we could, what proactive steps we could take, certainly following the guidelines of the Department of Massachusetts Health and CDC. So we've been putting out information and making some slight changes in our schools. Some of those changes have been outlined in letters to parents, which include asking parents to keep students home that are not feeling well, asking parents and guardians not to come into our schools if they're not feeling very well, and asking if the students have had a fever to stay home for 48 hours clear of a fever. And we're asking for participation with that. Very difficult to monitor. Our school nurses, I want to give a shout out to all of our school nurses, they are working overtime to have direct communication with families that are absent, to sort of track the illnesses. We want to actually promote calmness in a crisis like this. We are, we do not have any cases of suspected coronavirus in Webster at this point, but we want to be proactive. Some of the proactive measures that we're taking is, you know, educating students and staff about the importance of washing their hands, and we've put hand sanitizers in all of our cafeterias. We've gone through and asked teachers to kindly remind students to wash their hands before eating breakfast, teaching kids how to sneeze without going everywhere. Those simple measures are what the guidelines are at this current point in time. So we're following all of them. We have had multiple meetings since Monday. Those meetings have to do with the ongoing data of what's going on in our country, the state of alarm, schools canceling, colleges telling kids to stay home, and putting a plan in place for should we have a case in Webster. I want to reiterate that we are working collaboratively with the Board of Health, our school administrators. We had a meeting this afternoon that involved our union representatives from the WEA and the paraprofessionals to talk about working together should something happen. I'm quite pleased at the collaborative efforts that we have. A notification went out to staff tonight, a newsletter went out to families, and we have on our website some information with some helpful resources for our families, which we would like to share with you tonight. There's been several communications to families. The helpful resources, the list of the resources are tips for parents. Our Department of Education has a coronavirus information, and in each of the letters, there's the link to the Department of Health and the CDC.
This should be a 20, not a 10. That's me. Fingers were too fast.
One piece of information that is hot off the press from the Department of Education that I literally just received was that the Commissioner had informed the superintendents that he was not making any waivers for anything at this point. He has just loosened up the language a little bit. We are obligated to go to school for 185 days, and his new language is, "All days lost to health, weather, or safety emergencies between March 16 and June 1 must be made up to ensure the 180-day school year or until the district reaches its previously scheduled 185 days, whichever comes first." So there won't be an addition. If all five snow days have been used up prior to this point, the district is not required to schedule additional days. And the Department of Education is informing us that for accountability purposes, because everything goes back to our MCAS accountability report, our district report card, the Department of Education will calculate chronic absenteeism as of March 2 and will not use attendance data for the remainder of the year. So that, I think, is going to be helpful as well. We're asking families that may be watching, staff, to keep the communication fluid with our school nurses. Our school nurses are kind of keeping a tally on what kind of illnesses we're seeing. People could be out, and it could be strep, could be nothing related to the flu, and we are just keeping that kind of data, and we're not sharing names or anything like that, but it's important data for us to have in Webster. So I feel that we are working diligently to provide information to our families and, most importantly, put practices and protocols in place to keep our schools safe. There's been a lot of conversation around school events. We had a meeting this morning around school events and having a large quantity of people come for events. It was decided at the meeting today with administrators that we would keep business as usual for this week. Given the recent news of the state of emergency, we are regrouping tomorrow to see what other information comes in from the state, from the Department of Public Health, Board of Health, and we will keep parents apprised of those changes. We did, as I stated in my letter that I will state again today, we have canceled the Washington, D.C. trip, we have canceled out-of-state field trips, and we have put all other field trips on hold. So, meaning we are not, that's not our priority. And then we really need to sit down and talk about having large groups of people come into our schools and what kind of impact. Certainly, we expect people to abide by not going someplace when they're not feeling well, but the issues with the coronavirus, from what we've been told, is you can be contagious and not know you have it, and it really puts us all in a precarious situation. So we ask everyone to be on alert, and certainly, if you're sick, stay away from the school, keep your children at home, be in contact with your doctor, and take your advice from your doctor. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that, because I know that is a big topic on everyone's mind.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. So in regards to, because I didn't hear the governors.
The governor called a state of emergency to help the state with accessing resources. How that relates into us, we don't know yet. But I just want to make sure that you know that we are being proactive, ordering hand sanitizers, communicating to families, keeping our communication fluid, and I'm pretty proud of the collaboration in Webster. And the nurses are monitoring. There's deep cleaning that's going on in our building. We bought new spray guns. On top of daily wipe down of doorknobs and sinks and door presses, the custodians are doing a great job. Our bus company is also doing a great job. They have purchased the disinfectant, and they're doing deep cleanings of our buses. So I think we are following all of our, all of the guidelines.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCarron. I mean, it's great, because one of the things that occurred to me this week was the bus.
Yeah.
And, you know, gatherings, again, common sense. On the business side, I'm seeing it, because it's very much a live situation, and I'm seeing it in the business world now where my customers are canceling me. Teleconference instead. You know, you might say it's an overreaction, but it's erring on the side of, how can you? Massachusetts, the, not all, but virtually all the cases are tied to that one event in Boston, Biogen.
And adults.
And I just want to follow up. I know you know this, but folks watching may not know this. Obviously, we as a school district are part of the overall effort that is being coordinated on the town side as well. And I know you work very closely, as you mentioned, with the Board of Health agent, and I know there was a presentation last night at the Selectmen's Meeting by both the Board of Health and their public nurse. So just for the community's sake, we have a tremendous working relationship with police, fire, EMS, Board of Health, and I know you're in constant contact with them. I just want to reiterate that as an overall town, so overall town-wide effort.
Well, we do, and I don't think a lot of communities have that fluid conversation. We're quite pleased to have access to each other's personal cell phones. It's, we're a phone call away. I think just 10 minutes ago, Jen sent, you know, information for us to share with the staff. So we're a team. And I think that's the message across the district. You know, we had the meeting today with the union leaders. We're as good as we work together. So this is a crisis. We will work together, and we will do the best that we can together. So thank you for that. As we move, as I move on in my report, I wanted to fill you in on some exciting community partnerships. As you know, the Samuel Slater Museum is being built right by the Park Ave Elementary School. At our last half-day, we had several staff members and district curriculum coordinators spend the afternoon with a team that are creating the space. We had the opportunity to see this very interactive space being created, and I think it's going to be something that wows everyone in Webster. But our teachers were part of a brainstorming session on how to create a learning environment and how to tie in that museum into our school. So I think our off-the-ground efforts with them will benefit us in the future. I know that our students at multiple grade levels will be visiting that museum, and I think there will be ongoing conversations about accessing our teachers' expertise and how to make learning about the Industrial Revolution, Webster, and Samuel Slater real to our students. There was a level of excitement that was just wonderful. So I want to give a shout out to the teachers that went and to Mr. Roberts for inviting us and opening that door for that partnership. As you may or may not know, we have an early literacy partnership group that we have kind of built this year, and that group consists of the Head Start leaders and teachers and the Town Library and our educators and staff over at Park Ave Elementary School and South County. And one of the things that we've made a commitment to do here is to not double our efforts, but collaborate and build stronger teams. The Town Library has reached out to me, and there's a meeting this Wednesday, which is tomorrow. They're planning a special event for the 2020 Earth Day, and they would like us to participate in that event, and we would like to participate in that event, and so there'll be more information coming on that. Another partnership, multi-layered partnership that we have is with MahFrey. As you know, we have been granted the Real Madrid Sports Program. We are still in the process of looking for coaches for our basketball season for, this would be for second language learners, and scheduling when the trainers from Spain would come out to visit us. Given the crisis that we're facing, that may be postponed. Another exciting challenge that we are working on, that I don't think I've shared with you, is we are about to enter a carbon challenge, the Webster Public School employees versus the MahFrey employees. So I'm going to pass this down to you so you can see. So what this entails is voluntary, having staff participate in calculating their own carbon footprint. There'll be a self-assessment. We're going to roll that out later this week, and there'll be, in March, there'll be ongoing articles for staff to read to learn more about lowering their carbon footprint. Scores will be generated, and there'll be an end celebration to see who wins. This carbon footprint challenge is sort of a dangler to get our staff excited about working on ways to help our environment and working on ways to incorporate design thinking into their teaching and learning. So the second row of what you see in front of you is called the Innova Challenge, Innova Challenge. There's an Innova, Innovation Office at MahFrey, and they have received special permission to pilot a program with us, and that would be for next year. Part of that program is to really involve our students in solving problems, real-life problems, with design thinking. So there's a rollout of building teams that might create, that might have a problem and then create a solution. Do you guys remember Destination Imagination? Does anybody remember Destination Imagination? It was like a critical thinking group. Kids had a project that they had to find an answer to, and then they competed. But it was all driven by student ideas and creativity. This reminds me of that. So we're going to try to roll this out. I'm not going to give away too many details, but MahFrey has innovative coaches that are willing to come and work with our teachers and staff on this and support our students, based on whether we have students do this as an after-school special, after-school enrichment, or if it's built into our curriculum, which would be ideal. And it could be across all different content areas. It could be in art, it could be in science, it could be in math, and it's building in that design methodology that's used in corporate America. So they're coming to train us. So the carbon footprint is sort of an excitement to get people interested in that. Another thing that we're working with MahFrey on is a, potentially rolling out a United Nations Sustainable Development Book Reading Club, K to 6. So the innovation program that we might roll out next year would be grades 7 through 12. And rolling out a book program about learning about sustainability through a book club would be grades K to 6. So we have a meeting coming up on how we could use our librarians to roll out the different 17 themes next year to keep our kids engaged in critical thinking and learning about their environment and sustainability. As you know, we have been partnering with Jill St. Seer, who has an organization called It Starts at Home, and we received a roomful of Christmas presents from her organization as well as MahFrey. We continue to work with Mrs. St. Seer on small little projects, potentially helping students that may need some things, and she has been meeting with our guidance counselors to create a list of high area needs for our school, and she is more than willing to keep that ball rolling. So I think that's exciting. We are also partnering and waiting for, to hear from Nichols on what kind of courses we can add to our program of study related to dual enrollment and getting all of our students or any student interested, the opportunity to step foot over on Nichols, not just on Nichols Honor students. And I'm also pleased to let you know that this Friday, I have an appointment over at Gentex with Kate Birdy, our STEM teacher. Gentex has a program that they've rolled out at middle schools to advance hands-on learning, engineering. So we're going to go learn a little bit more about that program. So there's a lot of excitement in our community to work with us, ongoing excitement. In my superintendent's note, I have posted the MCAS dates for you to know, and in other updates, we have received the TSV reports for the Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School. At this point, they are being unpacked over at the building levels with the ILT members. I did attend yesterday's unpacking with the Webster Middle School, and I believe the Bartlett High School unpacking began today. We will be bringing that report to you, but I prefer to bring those with, to you when the principals of those schools are here. I want to give a shout out to Jill Chapdeline. She has recently wrote a grant for ongoing CPM coaching for additional 14 days for our Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School, so we've got our fingers crossed on that. We've had pretty good luck with our grant writing, so we hope that that's going to come. Other things that are happening, we have our wellness meeting coming up on March 16, and on top of meeting regarding coronavirus planning, we are meeting monthly, sometimes twice a month, with WEA. Our communication is fluid. Our partnership has really been very positive, and I wanted to keep you updated on that. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Dr. Gogan? Hearing none, again, thank you and for all your efforts and the team. I know there's a lot going on. Next item on the agenda, student update, Logan Peranto. Good evening, Logan.
Good evening. I'd like to start by talking about how there's been Black History Month trivia every day for the past two weeks with questions about African-American athletes, singers, artists, political figures, and et cetera. Seniors had a meeting in the auditorium on February 27 regarding college financial aid. The Student Council is running the Mr. Bartlett Competition, which will be this Thursday, March 12. For more on our clubs, the Medical Careers Club had a CPR class on February 27. The DECA Club competed in the state competition in Boston, and Katherine James took home first place in her role play at the competition. Again, the Student Council participated in a statewide conference in Hyannis on March 7th and 8th, with the group bringing home the five-star award and the gold level of excellence. For athletics, the boys' basketball team won games against Greer Lowell Technical and Bellingham High Schools before playing their final game against Sutton in the District E Division III Championship. The boys finished the season with a record of 20 wins and four losses. The cheerleading team won the regional competition on Sunday, March 8, and will compete this Sunday, March 15, at Worcester State for the state competition. Lastly, for my report, the spring sports signups were held, and trials will be held this coming Monday, March 16.
Any questions or comments for Logan?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Logan, I just wanted to say congratulations to you and the rest of the team for such a great season.
Thank you very much.
You guys should be really proud.
Thank you very much.
It was great working with you. For how many years?
Six.
Well, and before that. So congratulations.
Remember when you were just a little boy out there with the Bartlett shirt on? Any other questions or comments? Certainly, good luck to the cheerleaders. Is it Saturday or Sunday?
It's this Sunday.
Sunday. And do we have a favorite in the Mr. Bartlett Competition Thursday evening?
I would hope it'd be me.
You're competing, okay.
There's a public, glad you said that.
That was my question.
Public service announcement for everybody to attend.
Be humble.
Because if you think he's good on the football, basketball, and baseball diamond?
There we go.
I've heard his talent is going to be out of this world. No pressure on him.
No pressure at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report, Monique Perangeli. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the School Building Committee update. As you know, we've been waiting for the enrollment report to come in. It did come in. We're going to be discussing that later on in the agenda, so that's really all that's new. Not too much going on. We got that, I believe it was on the end of February, February 28, I think, we got, we received a copy of it. So we'll review that later in the agenda, but we really haven't had any meetings or anything as we're waiting for information. So we're on to the next step now. Next item is Federal Internal Controls Guideline. As you know, the, I've been coming to you with a lot of audits and information that has been going on over the past year. We knew about a year ago that these were kind of ramping up, and working with our auditors, he informed us of new guidelines that were coming down. We no longer could just use our own internal documents that we have. We have business managers' procedure manuals and stuff like that, but they wanted guidelines specific to federal grants alone. So I started working on this over the summer with, I informed Tim Bell. We both have these requirements that we're going to need to meet for federal grant funding through the town and through the school department. At the time, he was a little busy, so I said, "I'd take it on, I'd start working on and get something down." It's not something that I had to reinvent or recreate. Masbo's been working on it with Weston, so they can, came up with a template, and then they shared it out so districts can modify to what our own internal procedures are. So that's what I've been doing. I've worked on it over the past few months, and I've had a couple meetings with the town accountant, Tim Bell, just to review, because as, he's only in his second year here, and it was good for him to sit down and kind of talk about what our procedures and protocols are internally here. He knows what they're doing on the town side, but as far as where we stand, we do things a little bit differently as the processes go through. So they're going to be working on their own manual, I'm sure, once we're done with ours, and tweak it to fit how they process stuff. But it was for your review. I don't know if you have any questions. The biggest, the biggest difference between the federal and the state is the federal has different purchasing requirements. As far as us as business managers, we mostly do everything through 30B, which is our guidelines. It tells us that anything under $50,000, we need to use free prices, sound business practices. Anything over $50,000, we can, we need to do sealed bids and start moving to that. Federal guidelines are stricter. So really, what they're saying is, we need to be using the stricter of the guidelines. So with federal procurement laws, anything under $3,000...
So with federal procurement laws, anything under $3,000, they call a micro purchase. They want us to actually get free prices from micro purchases. So anything that we're getting through stores, if we go to buy folders and paper clips, and this is where we're running into with the procurement review. I know we're having that tomorrow with food service. They were looking, they want three quotes for everything. Any micro purchase, they want three quotes, which is what, we haven't had to do that under state law. You know, as long as we're using sound business practice for small purchases, we can do that. Then they get into $3,000 and $10,000 where it's a little more. We have to actually have documented and go out and get things in writing. And then over that, they, their bids are $35,000. They have to do sealed bids where state law is $50,000. So that's the biggest difference in federal procurement laws. Really what we did is we just went through this. We put our procedures that we're doing into, into writing. We already had protocols and procedures in place. They just weren't on paper for federal grants. Now they are. So I feel pretty confident with this document. I think we're in good shape. The auditors have actually seen it when they came in to do the audit, and they seem happy with the document. So this is just for, you know, your review and if you have any comments. But I just wanted you to know what we're working on behind the scenes in the office. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCarron.
Just quick, so just, just for clarification. So under federal guidelines, do they only apply to us when we're spending federal money?
Correct. So our Title I, our special education grants, our food nutrition.
Food, which is big.
Yep, which is big.
Which is big.
So I'm looking forward with the auditors coming in tomorrow for the procurement review. So that's going to give me a real good idea for this because this is going to be different. They're going to be looking at this when they come in at the end of the year in June to do the financial review of federal grants. Two different departments, two different things. But, you know, I know they're strictly looking at this. I've already had multiple conversations on the phone with a gentleman who's coming out tomorrow. It's going to be, it's going to be educational. It's going to be learning, and I'm looking forward to, you know, the feedback. Going to be interesting. I've already talked to two districts who've had it, and they said it was a complete nightmare. But it's good.
Yeah, but they weren't as good as you were, so.
Well, I don't know about.
Are, you are.
It'll be good. It's, you know, they're there to help and guide. That's what it's for. So, I mean, it's all how you take it. You can't take it personal. You learn, you, and you don't always have to agree on everything. You discuss it, you talk it through, and you follow the law. That's what it's there for. So, so we'll be ready. We'll be good to go.
Okay, thanks. So I know this is a draft, even though down below it says approved by school committee.
No, that was from Weston and Douglas when they were working on it. I just didn't change all of that yet. I didn't change the cover yet.
And do you have any sense when you think your final version might be ready?
Yeah, I'll probably, I'm going to be ready by next school. I was just tweaking little methods. I didn't know if there was any feedback or you had any questions about anything. It's, it's pretty much a solid document at this point. I've read through it. You know, I'm asking other people to read through it because you know what it is when you read through something 100 times. You see yourself so much, the words just look. So it's just a different set of eyes to say, well, this looks messed up. Or you have spelling, or you have page things wrong, or other things. But the document, the foundation of the document is solid.
And not being an accounting expert, it again seemed very good to me.
I'm going to thank Masbo for that.
There you go.
There you go.
Any other questions? I assume that's the end of your report, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Perangeli? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Principal Report, Robin Parmley, Park Avenue Elementary School. Good evening, Mrs. Parmley.
Good evening, how are you?
We're good, thank you.
So we've been busy, of course, at Park Avenue Elementary School. We just recently had kindergarten information night for parents and guardians and grandparents. We had over 50 representatives for incoming kindergarten students. And this was really put on by the staff mainly. Our kindergarten team just hit it out of the park. They each took turns at the mic, explained the kindergarten day, and answered all the questions. We did a Q and A whole group, and then we had a time for them to come up to the teachers individually. We had ELL teachers there. We had some of our special educators. It was just a really wonderful team effort. In addition, we had some of our South Community, South County Community Partnership Group is there, Amy Salona, as well as the Girl Scouts, our PTO, just kind of connecting with these families and giving them a look at, to who we are as a school. So we thought that was fabulous. In addition, we have coming up, we're going to be inviting our area preschools into Park Ave on May 18th, and they'll get to come in and, you know, see what the lunch line is like, to get a little tour of the school, get a snack, hear a story. And then we'll also be inviting our families back as well for incoming families. And they'll be going through that same type of routine and just really making those really important connections as we begin to transition our preschool families into Park Avenue. In addition, we just had Dr. Seuss Week, which is always fabulous. Every day we had a different theme dressing up. And our wonderful partnership with MAFRE, they were amazing. They actually purchased books from K to 2 and came in and read. And they left the hardback Dr. Seuss book for the students, and they engaged in an activity that all the teachers had created in advance. So it was just a really great morning. In addition, coming up, or what we've had and coming up again, we had our big MCAS training. Not the most exciting event, but very important and a mandated training. We did a very thorough training during our half-day, and we used up all of the time going over protocols and processes, also giving staff an opportunity to ask questions, to make sure that we're very prepared. Our goal is to have two adults, the classroom teacher or the test administrator and another adult. That is the model that DESI, although they don't mandate, they prefer that. And we did that last year and was very successful. So we're looking forward to a wonderful MCAS 2020. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Parmley? Hearing none, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is Old Business. The first item under Old Business, monthly fundraising applications. Again, it's school committee policy to publicly review the fundraisers that were approved since our last time we reviewed last month. School committee does not approve any fundraisers. That is done by the building principal and superintendent. One of my favorite events, hopefully will continue, Empty Bowls is occurring on October 17th from 6:00 to 8:00. What did I say?
October.
It's been a long day, I apologize. April 17th. I was reading April, I really said October, huh? Wow, it's pretty scary. Should turn it over to Mrs. Blight, finish this up for me. Next item on the, ah, sorry, the next application, the National Junior Honor Society was selling popcorn and candy sales for a PBIS event. And then another wonderful event occurring later this month, the Scholastic Book Fair by Park Ave. Is it March 23rd to the 28th? Okay, that's what it says here, so I don't want to give up. Do you mind turning your mic on in case, sorry?
Absolutely.
I'll get yelled at if someone was really interested.
So our PTO Book Fair is Friday evening, March 27th. And then it is also on Saturday, March 28th.
And I'm sure there'll be a lot of information in social media.
Absolutely, yes.
And those are all the fundraisers that were approved. And again, all fundraisers are posted on the school district website after they receive superintendent approval, correct? Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, next item on the agenda is the Approval of Central Massachusetts Collaborative Agreement. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. In front of you, you have the redline version of the Department of Education-approved new agreement. In this new agreement, it has expanded the partnership on the collaborative to the Oxford Public Schools. Everything that's changed is in red, so you can see that. The tuition rates will be voted on annually at the board meetings. And this, after, it's already been approved by the Worcester Public School Committee. After you approve it, there's one signature page that we're passing around. It goes to Oxford, and then it goes back to the Department of Education for the final review. And this would take effect July 1, 2020.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Let me just publicly state, I know there's been a lot of work with you and Mrs. Benenda, and others, I'm sure, but as the existing board. And it's, based on everything that's presented in the past, it's not only very good for the collaborative, but very good for us as a member district to have an additional district in the collaborative.
I agree with you. And it has been a team effort. I want to also extend compliments to Monique and to Kathy Barris and to the Special Ed Director in Worcester, Kay Seer, Seal, and the business manager over there, and the new Oxford team. I think the new executive director is bringing about incredible changes there. She's taking a systematic approach and really looking at programs, curriculum, helping students and being much more efficient and effective with resources. So I've been very pleased.
And just to clarify regarding tuition, the process is it's voted on by the collaborative board as a recommendation and then voted on by each member committee? Or is it your board that votes the tuition?
I think it's our board that votes the tuition.
I just want to clarify that.
And just to, and that's been the bone of contention. Because the way that Worcester pays is they pay a big lump sum for lots of kids. We literally have one, two, or three students there on any given time. So the, we're trying to get more students in there that need to go there. And having different perspectives on the board will be helpful, I think, to make decisions about the growth and sustainability of that collaborative.
Good. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, what is the desire of the committee regarding this agreement?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Sadiki.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement as presented. Second?
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lori?
I'm sorry, I'm just giggling.
That's fine. I'll, Lori, to pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, it's unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is Acceptance of MSBA Design Enrollment Projection Certification.
Thank you. We received the enrollment projection as you have in your packet. And I'm just giggling because of Lori, that's all.
Wow, there's a big old buzz on that side of the room.
I got the look. The projection enrollment for our proposed Bartlett High School project is 480 to 500 students for the projected enrollment, enrollment for the project. They do a very deep analysis, which is detailed here. The, there is a slight dip in our projected enrollment, but then a fairly stable trend through the year 2029-30. The projection enrollment for the year 2930 is about 420 students.
So is the, yes, go ahead.
No, I believe, so it was our district proposing a 480 to 500 student enrollment. That's what we were proposing when we went in on December 19th. The MSBA is recommending a design enrollment of 445
Okay.
for Bartlett High School. So for anybody who's watching, if they're not aware, the school district went to the town and asked for approval for a feasibility study. What that means is they, we hire OPMs and designers to come in and take a look at the building as a whole, a program that goes in, on, on a daily basis inside. Part of that process is they take a look at our enrollment over the prior 10 years and the historical enrollment. As you know, this building was designed as a 7 through 12 school many years ago. So there's a shift now. We're a 9 through 12, depending on the programming that we're going to have. When we went in and spoke with the MSBA, we were projecting about 480 to 500 because we're hoping to bring back some of those students that are now out of district or another with, with the proposed programming that we're going to offer here. So after assessing that, the MSBA came back and looked at a historical because they cannot include pre-K in the enrollment in that number. So they're looking at a 445 number for enrollment moving forward.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And just to clarify, it is an important part of the process, but it would not affect, obviously, reimbursement rates?
It doesn't affect the reimbursement rate, but I think it does affect the overall design of the building. They're going to look at how much space we need for 445. So if we are potentially looking to renovate other areas, they might feel, well, you might have to fund that 100% or something. So that could be part of the process, depending on how we're going to use the area.
Right.
Depending on programming, you know, program design is going to be huge. So there's a lot of factors that come into that. There could be an impact down the road. But without taking a look at a program, we don't know what that's going to be yet.
The reality is their expectation is 445.
Yes.
Ms. Sadiki can go first.
So as they say, if you build it, they will come, right? And as evidence, by Park Ave. We projected a certain amount of enrollment, and we've already outgrown that building.
I believe that was designed for 730, am I right?
Yep.
730 or 760?
That was going to be my point.
And we're hovering just over 800.
It was a long time ago.
Yeah, it was with 730 or 760, and we opened over that number.
Yeah.
We opened over that number.
So I just wonder, I've not been through this process before, so I don't know what, what kind of flexibility there might be. But we have already outgrown our elementary school, so.
I think that's the purpose of this. Once they lock us in a number, that's the number. That's the number.
Is that the number, that's it?
That's the design number. Yeah, but it is based on programming. So one of the things that we did do with the staff was look at creative ways to use the space that we have. So if we continue that thought and continue building hands-on programs, we're going to need that space. So that would be the tactic that we would take. It would have been nice to have 480 to 500 students.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I think just having gone through this with the Park Ave, I mean, all the state can do is go through the historical data. And that's what they look at. So we all know now that when we put the key in the building at Park Ave, they were wrong. And as Kelly said, you know, if you build it, they will come. So, so to Mrs. Gogan's point, I mean, I guess we have to be creative and smart to utilize, you know, whatever they're going to approve. Because in this process, they, even though we're a partner with the state, I mean, they have the final say, and they have now told us what the number is. And so the, you know, I guess that's the answer. There is no appeal to that. That's the number, and we move forward, right?
Yeah, I think, you know, when we went in December, we laid out why we thought we were going to get the increasing enrollment. I think we talked about Park Ave a bit. And we talked about, you know, students that we want to pull back, where they're going to come from. And, you know, I, I think once they do this, there's kind of their final say. We could try and contest and, you know, try and get a few more. But I think once they make up their mind, looking at the history of enrollment through the district, they're pretty set.
That was actually my question, so I'm good, yeah. I'm good. I just wanted to know, wiggle room, but there isn't any.
And just to follow up what Mrs. Perangeli said, you know, obvious, going through the process of Park Ave as a taxpayer, I was actually incredibly impressed with the MSBA. Because their main job is to make sure that the millions and millions of tax dollars that they're issuing to cities and towns every year is being spent on, A, exactly what is needed, and B, making sure that the projects are built reasonable and within budget. So although it's frustrating at times because we believe the demand will be higher, I do understand where they're coming from. It doesn't mean that the final design of the building that is presented, and this is what the School Building Committee goes through over the next 15, 18 months, is based strictly off 445 students. It may mean that a small portion of what we think we need may not fall within their reimbursement. Is that fair enough to say?
Yes, very, very good.
And again, I should know this, we're still expecting April's board meeting?
Yes.
Assuming this is approved.
Yep, yep.
This needs to be signed.
It has to be on April's board meeting.
Right. And they know that, and they're okay with that?
She has guaranteed me time and time She has guaranteed me time and time again that--
Because I know we were hoping March, and I understand why it got delayed.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions related to this agenda item? Hearing none, what is the pleasure of the committee? Let me rephrase that, I will entertain a motion to approve the MSBA Design Enrollment Projection Number of 445 students as presented. Mr. McCarron?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, just pull the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda under new business is approval of Student Opportunity Act Plan. Dr. Goggin.
Thank you. As you have, in front of you, you have a, what was supposed to be a two-page plan, a very comprehensive student opportunity plan that states how we will be using our Chapter 70 additional funds, which ties very nicely into our FY '21 proposed budget. We did put this on the website for feedback. We did receive feedback. We did receive some feedback and questions from our union, and all of their ideas, I think, we can work with, but we believe that the plan in front of you meets the requirements as presented by the commissioner and the Department of Education, and we think it's a pretty good plan. This does need to be approved by the school committee and submitted by April 1st to the Department of Education. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from-- Is there any feedback that you received that you feel is worth sharing publicly, since that was, you know, an important, I know you can only reach out and you can't force people to respond.
I'd be happy to share the feedback that we received. We received feedback that said this is a great plan, very detailed, very thorough. Any other comments? No comments? The feedback specifically from, I would say, the, a union, was to increase the number of instructional assistants at all levels. Classrooms that have both teachers and IAs at all time are better able to meet the needs of students. Increasing the elementary librarian to full-time to support ELA standards in early grades. Add a literacy coach at the elementary school. Add a reading specialist at the high school. Increasing funding for substitute teachers to entice more people to become more subs or create permanent building subs at each building. Create transitional program with supports for students that are returning to the district. Invest in a transitional curriculum. I'm going to actually counter these, maybe I should counter them as I'm saying them to make more sense. Increasing the number of instructional assistants at all levels, I'll just go backwards. Our instructional assistants are tied to special education. Although it would be ideal for every teacher to have an instructional assistance, the instructional assistants are there for students, to help students close gaps, learn skills, develop independence. Increasing the librarian to full-time. We, the librarian does support reading, but our teachers are primarily responsible for teaching ELA standards. The library is used to enhance that, and she does meet the needs of covering prep times by having a special. Adding a reading specialist at the high school, we've kind of looked very deep at this, and we've actually looked at data. We've looked at the data of our students in their eighth grade results at MCAS, their current grades, and their I-Ready assessments. And there's discrepancies between all of them, kind of leaning towards that students can read and that they may be choosing not to read on certain things. Increasing funding for substitutes. We've talked about this at all of our budget meetings over the last three years, you know--
Yeah.
Yep, we have increased the funding, but to put in permanent subs in each of our buildings would cost us approximately $50,000 per person. A person would get benefits, and that would be $150,000, and that would cover three classrooms. So, that's not fiscally responsible. Create transitional programmings. We're working on looking at, you know, we're collaborating with CMC, SWEAC, we have the May Institute working with our STAR programs. We do have a transitional curriculum post-secondary program that maybe some of our staff don't know about. You know, other things like purchasing kid-friendly furniture, those are all building-based budget items, certainly, that could be done. Increasing money for books and supplies, that's again, building-based budgets, and we rely on the principals to collect feedback from their teachers on that. Updating and increasing technology, we continue to do that, and we are, that is in our budget. And the increasing budget for professional development, which we certainly have done over the last three years. So, I do feel that our Student Opportunity Act has really done what it's being asked to do. It is focusing on our subgroups that are not reaching proficiency. We're putting in ILL teachers, we're adding counselors, and, and it's very detailed. So, I'm pleased at the plan.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Let me just once again thank you and your team for putting this together. I know there's a lot going on, and it was a relatively short amount of time, and I do agree that this plan coincides with everything you've been saying for many years now. And although, you know, we are very grateful for the additional funding that's received from the Student Opportunity Act, it's not, you know, it's not a significant, millions and millions of dollars, where we could meet every single wish list that all of us would like to have, so.
And I would be remiss if I did not mention Mrs. Daniels. Mrs. Daniels and I sat together in this room for a very long time to iron this out and put it in a presentable format and follow the template from the state. So, thank you, Mrs. Daniels.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act Plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, just pull the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is Bullying Prevention and Intervention Policy, JFICFB-R. First reading.
First reading.
Dr. Goggin.
I was going to ask you to table this.
Ooh, did I miss that?
But that's okay. The content of the pol-- the new bully prevention and intervention plan without the forms is in front of you. The forms are not the correct version. I do want to tell you a little bit about this. The, we have formed an anti-bullying task committee, and it is comprised of the, some of the deans, the assistant principals, some administrators, and some counselors, and central office staff. And we work diligently to update this plan. You can call this a first read, it does not have the, all of the forms. And when I mean the forms, it's the checklist, who's being notified, so we could table it for a first read until you have it in front of you, but I do want to thank the following people before you make that decision. Gina Neves, Patty Mackay, Heidi Peterson, Kathy Barris, Chris Shen, Nancy Guiney, Jill Chapdellane, and a special shout-out to Margarita Neves, who translated the entire document, which is multiple pages, into Spanish. This, again, was posted on our website for feedback from our staff and parents, and I have to say, we did not receive a lot of feedback, positive or negative, on it.
So, from a process standpoint, in the policy manual, will the forms be attached as part of the official policy?
Yes.
They will be. And I do believe we would have to table--
Okay.
--the first reading, unfortunately.
Okay.
Unless the, I don't want to speak for the entire committee, but that would just be my opinion.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think so.
But again, thank you to everybody who worked very hard putting this together. Next item on the agenda, Equal Education Opportunities Policy, JBB, third and final reading. Again, I will state just once for the remainder of the agenda items, it is school committee policy, whenever there's a new policy, we go through three readings at three different meetings, and with the potential of that policy to be approved at the third meeting and final reading, I assume no changes to this, Dr. Goggin?
None.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Equal Education Opportunities Policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, just pull the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is the Homeless Students Enrollment Rights and Services Policy, JFABD, third and final reading. Any changes, Dr. Goggin?
None.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Homeless Students Enrollment Rights and Services Policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, just pull the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is the Educational Opportunities for Military Children Policy, JFABE, third and final reading. Any changes, Dr. Goggin?
None.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Educational Opportunities for Military Children Policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, just pull the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is the Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care Policy, JFABF, third and final reading. Any changes, Dr. Goggin?
None.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care Policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, just pull the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is Review Transfer Signing of Bills, Payroll, and Vouchers.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Siddiqui.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Laurie, just pull the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.